Twenty three. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for this meeting. As in all of our previous council meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. I would also like to extend a warm welcome to the members of Durham Youth Council who have come along to show their support for today's motion. Finally, welcome to councillor June Watson, the newly elected member for Dordon Division. Congratulations to councillor Watson on her election. I hope you find your time on the council an interesting and rewarding experience. I would remind members that after today's meeting, a video produced by the Children in Care Council called 'We Are People, Not Problems' will be shown, and I would encourage all members to stay back to watch this. A number of young people involved in the project will be joining us for this for this segment at the conclusion of today's meeting. Please, could I ask you to remain seated at the end of the meeting whilst we get the video ready? Members, it is with great sadness that I have to announce the death of former Durhamside District councillor Jack Palace. Jack was elected to represent the Havana Ward on Durhamside District Council in May nineteen ninety-one and served until two thousand and three. Jack was made an alderman in two thousand and nine. I also have been informed that councillor that Alderman John George Cowper passed away earlier this week. John served on Durham City Council from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and nine and was a former mayor of Durham City in two thousand and one. John was made an alderman in two thousand and nine. Can I ask you all to join with me in standing for a moment's silence? The minutes of the meeting, can I have a mover?
Chair, I'd like to move the minutes, please.
Second the minutes, Chair.
Are the minutes agreed? We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest on any business item of business on the agenda today? Councillor Quinn.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have a pecuniary interest on item eleven, therefore I'll be leaving the meeting at that time. Thank you.
Item three. Members, can I ask that everyone is respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the head of Legal and Democratic Services, it will not be revisited. Since the last meeting in October, I have attended various events, including a visit by a Japanese delegation to Durham Town Hall in October, the launch of the Future Business Magnet Scheme on the ninth of November. I also attended a remembrance service at County Hall, Haswell, Durham Cathedral and Stanley. I was also delighted to attend the Spanish Apprenticeship Awards at the Spanish Gallery, Bishop Auckland, at the end of last month. I am also pleased to announce the following successes since the last council meeting. Improvements to the path between Old Pitt Lane in Newton Hall and River Green at Akeley Heads, which has been completed. The path has been resurfaced and widened and a gate installed to prevent cars gaining access. A personalised service which helps people with disabilities and mental health. Needs Find Work has received the highest possible rating in an independent inspection. Our Durham Enable Service was graded as excellent in an audit carried out by the British Association for Supporting Employment after receiving a total of ninety-two percent. Durham Enables Job Coaches Work With People Who Face Significant Barriers To Entering Work Because Of The Long Term Impact Of Disability Or Deteriorating Mental Health, Helping Them To Find And Stay In Work. The Specialist Service, which assists County Durham residents aged eighteen and over, has been commended in all areas of its work. The grading as excellent of the Durham Enable Service is an audit carried out by the British Association for Supported Employment. Finally, I would like you to join me for a Christmas celebration tomorrow. This will be held in the Durham Room with the concert beginning at one P M. The concert will last for approximately one hour and festive refreshments will follow. We move on to item four, the leader's report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thanks, Chair. Firstly, can I also congratulate and give a warm welcome to councillor June Watson? Last month saw the return of Lumiere to County Durham. It was great to see so many people coming into Durham City and to Bishop Auckland. Approximately a hundred and sixty thousand people attended over the four cold November nights, and their photographs, videos and stories will have reached many hundreds of thousands more. We now look forward to the Christmas season and know there's a lot going on across the county. There are markets, carols, pantomimes, visits with Santa, which I'm sure some of you will be taking advantage of and going to partake in. And as the chair said, there's also her Christmas celebration concert to look forward to tomorrow. So with this being our last meeting before Christmas, I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you a happy and restful festive period and all the best for the New Year.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. We move on to item five, questions from the public. Three questions have been received for today's meeting from Kay Fotheringham, Bill McCordle and Nigel Watson. Mister Watson is unable to attend the meeting and has asked that I put his question. I will invite Miss Fotheringham to ask her question, and once it's been answered, Mister McCordle will be invited to ask his question. Once this has been answered, I will put Mister Watson's question. No supplementary questions are allowed, and there is no debate in relation to the questions. Miss Fotheringham, can I ask you?
Thank you, yes. My question is, when did the public consultation about the proposal to build the Tees Valley Energy Recovery Facility take place and what was the public response?
Can you turn your mic off? Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mrs Fotheringham, for your question. Durham County Council has an established waste management strategy that sets out our ambitions to increase the reuse and recycling of materials and reduce the amount of waste for disposal from households in the county. The implementation of this strategy has seen us become the authority with the highest levels of recycling in the North East despite the recent challenges of the pandemic and the associated change in public behaviours. Furthermore, the council's waste strategy embeds the principle that we will aim to recover as much waste as possible from the waste left over after recycling by avoiding the use of landfill and instead use the waste that we collect to create energy to help power the national grid and leftover ash that can then go for further recycling. Landfill is not a solution for County Durham as even the best managed landfills create methane emissions that are a potent greenhouse gas and incredibly harmful. The Strategy for Waste Management, encapsulated in the phrase 'reduce, reuse and recycle', and including the use of energy from waste as a treatment solution, was subject to full public consultation when it was developed, and we continue to deliver on those principles on a daily basis, emptying a million bins a month for the people of County Durham. To date, our residual treatment solution has been delivered through a commercial contract utilising energy from waste technology at Haverton Hill on Teeside. Whilst this is the best solution currently available, it will need to be replaced. The construction of the Tees Valley Energy Recovery Project represents a continuation of the County Durham Waste Strategy, but by developing publicly owned state of the art infrastructure which will be cleaner, greener and better value for money than the current arrangements and will secure a reliable waste management solution for the county over the coming years. The Gunning Principles are the founding legal principles for consultation in England, and these state that consultation should be undertaken when proposals are to a formative stage. The council adheres to this principle by fully consulting when energy from waste became the strategic solution to the county's residual waste treatment. The new facility continues to deliver on this strategy by providing the best practical environmental option for the future. The council can't return to using landfill as a primary treatment option, nor will it stand still when better environmental options can be delivered, especially when these are better financial options as well. The facility itself is also subject to rigorous planning controls which are both extensive and transparent, allowing both the public commentary and consultation and statutory consultation with relevant public agencies, including the Environment Agency. The outcome of the planning process to date has been that outlined planning permission was granted in July twenty twenty. Reserved matters applications, which again were subject to statutory and public consultation, was considered and subsequently granted planning permission in July of twenty twenty-three. As the plant is further developed, there will be a permitting process through the Environment Agency, again subject to public and statutory consultation, which will set out the detailed conditions under which the facility will run to ensure environmental compliance. Council continues to be open and transparent in its policies and operations. We've delivered extensive public engagement in all areas of our environmental and climate change policies, and we will continue to make this information available online and in the public domain. And I would also say, Chair, that I'm more than happy to meet at future date with with both the residents who are here today and Mister Watson if they'd like to discuss any of these issues further.
Thank you, councillor. Mister McCordle, can I ask you to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Contract terms for the Tees Valley Energy Recovery Facility, TVRF, include a duration of twenty-five years for the main contract. There is also provision for an eleven-year extension. If the plant's start date is first of April twenty twenty-six, the main contract will expire in twenty fifty. The extended contract would expire in or about twenty sixty. There is great uncertainty about future recycling rates, residual waste flows, grid connections, possible CCS arrangements and other factors. Why is Durham County Council prepared to sign off these contracts for such long terms? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I once again ask councillor Wilkes to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mister McCordle, for your question. Durham County Council, along with the six other partner authorities involved in the TVRF project, have a statutory duty to manage waste material safely and in accordance with the law, ensuring that all residents can enjoy a clean and sanitary environment. The development of the TVRF will allow the councils to continue to discharge these duties in the long term, whilst maximising carbon emission reductions, maximising recycling, providing control and long-term security, as well as a solution that is affordable and provides value for money. The TVRF is a critical and essential infrastructure development and will serve more than one point five million people living across County Durham, Tees Valley and Newcastle. It will provide a local, secure, reliable and affordable treatment solution for residual waste, that being the rubbish left over after recycling has taken place, which is produced in the region, helping move towards the goal of sending zero waste to landfill whilst ensuring that we have an essential sanitation service that can be maintained. The project partners are currently in the process of jointly procuring a contractor to design, build, finance and operate the Tees Valley Energy Recovery Facility. The facility has been designed with sufficient capacity to treat residual household waste from across the region, and in doing so will generate up to forty-nine point nine megawatts of electricity for export, sufficient to power the equivalent of about sixty thousand homes. It will be a combined heat and power enabled, it will be combined heat and power enabled, potentially allowing the export of heat to nearby users, and has been designed to be carbon capture ready to allow the future development of carbon capture infrastructure, which can then be integrated into the TVRF. As such, the facility will be well placed to deploy these technologies should a viable opportunity arise over the lifetime of the project. The existing residual waste treatment solutions of the partner authorities are due to expire in twenty twenty-five twenty-six. This contract provides an excellent opportunity for the joint procurement of a new, long-term, resilient solution within the full control of the partner authorities that will deliver value for money through economies of scale to each of the partners, including Durham County Council. Recovering energy from waste only takes place after recycling, and it is an important component of the waste hierarchy, the policy framework which determines the best environmental solution for dealing with waste, and is therefore complementary to efforts to recycle, reuse and reduce as much as possible. The partner authorities anticipate that recycling rates will continue to improve in the region as new national and local policies are introduced. However, not everything can be recycled, and even under the most ambitious future local recycling scenarios, there will still be a proportion of residual waste that will need to be treated through energy recovery to avoid sending it to landfill. The TVRF will not impact upon the pursuit of this higher recycling performance. Indeed, this has been factored in when specifying the capacity of the new facility. For reference, the top ten best recycling local authorities in England all use energy recovery for the final treatment of their residual waste. The contract duration of twenty-nine years reflects the times required to construct the facility, followed by a twenty-five year services phase. At the end of the contract, the facility will revert the ownership of the seven partner authorities, including Durham County Council. And as I said before, I'd be more than happy to meet with the residents for any further discussions they might wish to have, Chair.
Thank you, councillor.
Thanks, Chair. Just very briefly, on a on a point of order, I've listened very carefully to both the answers that councillor Wilkes given there, but the first question was very specifically asking for when the consultation period was and when the what the public responses were, and I don't believe councillor Wilkes answered either element of that question. Could it be noted in the minutes that whilst an answer was provided, those two points weren't actually answered by the portfolio holder? Thanks.
Point of order, Chair, I did actually explain when consultation took place regarding the policy of waste for the council, which was brought in under the previous Labour administration, and regarding the planning applications which have subsequently been passed.
Thank you, councillor. There is no debate around questions. The questions have been answered, and councillor Wilkes has agreed to meet with anyone who who wishes to meet and discuss. I will move on to the question. We have reached the ten-minute time limit for questions. Does council agree that we continue to finish the questions to enable me to put Mister Watson's question? Thank you. How will the CO2 emissions from the plant be controlled, given that TVRF have failed to secure funding from the government under the sequencing process for carbon capture? We will give Mister Watson a written reply to his question. Can I thank the members of the public for submitting their questions? Responses to all questions will be posted on the council's website following the meeting. We move on to item six, petitions. There are no petitions for today's meeting. We move on to item seven, report from Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Thanks, Chair. Present the report as tabled in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions have been received in respect of the report. Can I ask for council to note the report? Thank you. We move on to item eight, the mid mid-year review on treasury management for the period to the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-three. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report provides an overview of our treasury management activity during the first six months of the current financial year and the position at the thirtieth of September for the council's borrowing and investments. The report also provides members with an overview, some changes that are coming in from next year in terms of how we need to account for operating leases, which will mean we'll have to reflect the future liabilities of those leases on the balance sheet and therefore will feature as part of the treasury management reports next financial year. In terms of this report, the table of paragraph thirteen provides a summary of our overall treasury management position. Members will see that at the thirtieth of September, we had total debt outstanding of four hundred and twenty-three million and total cash investments of three hundred and forty-three million, our net debt position therefore being eighty million pound. Comparison figures at the thirty-first of March twenty-three are provided in the table, and members will see that our external borrowing at the end of September was seventeen million pound less than what it was at the first of April, reflecting the principal repayments on annuity loans in the first six months and the early redemption of a fifteen million pound maturity loan. Our cash investments are around eight million pound lower than they were at the first of April. The borrowing activity is detailed in sections fifteen to nineteen of the report, and the average interest rate paid on our external debt is now three point one one percent. An overview of our investment activity is set out in sections twenty to twenty-three, and the table of paragraph twenty-one provides a break- and the table of paragraph twenty-one provides a breakdown of the financial institutions, the length of investments, and the interest rates secured on those investments at the thirtieth of September, all the investments made in the period, and at the end of the period remain in line with our treasury management strategy. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, the report sets out details of our performance against the various treasury management and prudential indicators that we agreed at council in February, including details of our capital expenditure and financing and our capital financing requirements for the current year and to the position to the thirtieth of September. Members will see that the council continues to fully comply with its treasury management strategy and its treasury management policies, and is meeting all the requirements of the Prudential Code. As I mentioned, there are changes coming in from April next year which will impact on how we account for leases. These changes, which have been overseen by the Order Committee, will ensure that the council complies with International Financial Reporting Standard number sixteen, and details of these changes are set out in paragraph twenty-seven of the report onwards. The recommendations are set out in paragraph six, Chair, and for council to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank the resources director and his team for this comprehensive update on our treasury management activity during the first half of the year and for the information setting out our position as at the thirtieth of September? It's good, as always, to note that the council has continued to fully comply with all the requirements of the treasury management policy and strategy we agreed back at full council in February. Carefully managing our cash flows, external borrowing and investments, and maintaining compliance with the relevant codes of practice, in line with our prudential framework, is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for public money, and that is something that we must all be cognizant of when we sit in this chamber. I note the changes to accounting for leases from next year, the IFRS standard sixteen, as has been explained, which will mean that the external debt figures reported will be higher than what is currently the position, which, as I understand it, will not make any difference to our underlying position, and I refer members to paragraph thirty-three in that regard. But it will mean our accounting treatment as a local authority is now in line with the private sector. With that, Chair, I would like to request that council notes the report.
Can I ask the council to note the report?
Agree.
We move on to item nine, Director of Public Health and Annual Report. Can I ask the director of public health to present her report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. I'm delighted to present my annual report to you this morning. As you know, it's a strategic responsibility of the local authority for the director of public health to write an independent report and for that report to be published by council. And this report was supported and published by Cabinet in October, and I will outline the details in the report to you today. And I think I decided to do a look back over ten years, as public health has been in local government for ten years now, as well as over that same time span, having the Health and Wellbeing Board in place too. We know in terms of the annual report, and you'll see in the report, that it's a responsibility to describe the health and wellbeing of our local population. Having that good quality data as well as evidence from local conversations is really important. So we've got one story in terms of our data, and I think we're fortunate in County Durham to have Durham Insight, which is a platform where we hold a lot of our information about the health and wellbeing of our local residents. However, obviously, what we try to do is go further than that and to really look in-depth at some of the health needs and the assets of our local communities and how that can inform our priorities. And certainly over the course of the last year, under our joint strategic needs and asset assessment, there've been some really in-depth pieces of work, one looking at the needs of our veterans, and the recommendations from that piece of work have been taken forward through the Armed Forces Forum, and then another one which has been looking at the needs of our aging well population, which I have to say started at the age of fifty, so suddenly many of us may be in the aging well population. But again, there were some really clear recommendations of how we support and maintain health through our lives. You will also see, however, in the report, some very challenging data in relation to our children, young people's mental health, and we have seen certainly as a result of the pandemic, the increase in mental health disorders in our children and young people, as well as a really, really good example of some work being done in one of our primary schools, which is replicated in many of our schools, called our Durham Resilience Programme, which seeks to ensure that our young people can build resilience during their childhood along with their families. Thank you. I mentioned the word assets, and I think quite often people think of assets as being buildings, but I think what we think about in County Durham is the strengths of both our buildings, it could be our green space, it's our communities, our residents, and assets can be very protective to the health and wellbeing of our local population. And over the course of the last year, through the Health and Wellbeing Board, we've been redeveloping and refreshing our physical activity strategy, and that has very much drawn on the assets that we have in County Durham to really ensure that we can make as many people as physically active as easily as possible, and so that they can take part of their everyday life because of the huge health benefits of being physically active. And I think what you can see on this slide, that some of that is about our green space, it's about the access to the countryside, but also being able to walk from people's doorsteps, but also the volunteering that takes place in relation to physical activity, which again is a real benefit for us here in County Durham. Thank you. I've also started to kind of look at the impacts of different elements on people's health and wellbeing. Obviously, there are certain factors or genes that we can't change, but other things do impact on people's health and wellbeing, and this slide outlines that there's a combination of those factors. So some of the things around in relation to health and care services contribute probably about fifteen percent of people's health and wellbeing. And you'll see on slides, so in County Durham, sadly, our rate of diabetes, for example, is higher than in other parts of the country. We then have a whole range of healthy behaviours, and some of those we'll discuss in slightly more detail this morning, but may also include things like sexual health, and we are very fortunate in County Durham that our rate of sexual transmissions is lower than in other parts of the country, and certainly over the last ten years, we've seen a significant reduction, for example, in our teenage conceptions. And then lastly, the body, the legs of the person, is really thinking about actually those underpinning influences on people's health and wellbeing, which might be whether people have a warm home, a good job, you know, access to that green space that I was just talking about. And it's the combination of those things, and obviously what we see on this slide is sadly in County Durham, we are still outlier in terms of our child poverty, although a lot of work taking place in relation to that. Thank you. So in terms of ten years of public health being in local government, you know, moving back into government, local government really did give that opportunity, particularly thinking about that legs of the person in terms of being very close to thinking about things like housing, employment, environment, education, those factors that really influence people's health and wellbeing, and to embed and working with those other council and partner service areas. It also, I guess, brought really new responsibilities to local government that hadn't had previously, including health visiting services, for example, drug and alcohol, and sexual health. So those new responsibilities which were taken on board and have worked on over the last ten years, working really closely with other parts of the council to ensure that we're trying to reduce inequalities and get the best for our local residents. Thank you. And I guess in looking back to look forward, our residents over the last ten years have faced a wide range of challenges, you know, have seen austerity, we've been through a global pandemic, we've had the cost of living crisis, and we're now seeing some of the range of adverse weather that we'll be needing to face as residents. I think as well, when I was looking back at these reports, some of them, you know, have remained challenging for us as the local authorities seeking to improve health inequalities. Some of you may remember the report on all the lonely people, which really sought to tackle social isolation and which led to significant investment into social isolation, also in relation to work and health, and obesity an issue too big to talk about or too big to ignore. We've also seen the Taylor family, which was a fictional family, to really try and describe some of those health and wellbeing issues for us locally. And then as we've been through the pandemic, what became really important was how we work with our local communities, and I hope what you see in this year's report, as well as the last few reports, are real examples of case studies from our local residents in terms of their health and wellbeing and what is happening to improve health and wellbeing and reduce inequalities. And I guess it's come full circle that in this report, we're looking back to look forward, and the first report was actually called Back to the Future, so we've come a little bit full circle in the last ten years. I think as well, in terms of the last ten years, we've also seen the Health and Wellbeing Board, and that was created to oversee the health and wellbeing of local residents, and also to look at the integration of health and social care, of which there have been many changes over the last ten years, and obviously our services are undergoing another review currently. So the annual report of the Health and Wellbeing Board details some of those changes and has stopped and refreshed its priorities to ensure it's really focused on the things that are going to make the biggest difference to local residents, and it has four key priorities, but then dedicated links out to the other partnerships, whether that's children, young people, whether that's environment, whether that's culture, to ensure that those underpinning determinants of health are addressed. I think the board as well, over the last ten years, again, was the responsible board for the local authority for our local outbreak management plan during Covid, which was a really important part of our work locally, and has also, we've seen, the work on health protection and our Better Care Fund. So significant work that's taken place collectively, and I think in County Durham, that partnership working is very strong while not being afraid to address some of the challenges. As we've refreshed our priorities for the Health and Wellbeing Board, what we're seeing in terms of those four priorities that have been highlighted, the first one that we've looked at over the last ten years, what we see certainly in terms of tobacco, is that there's been a reduction of twenty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred people who have smoked in County Durham. We've also seen a significant reduction in our young person's smoking level, which is really significant. And obviously, the youth council are here this morning, and they've been doing some work with us on smoking, which is really positive. However, we still have a long way to go, and we see our smoking and time of delivery level still at significantly higher levels than other parts of the country and the North East. We've worked over many years in terms of healthy weight, and it still remains quite a challenge. It's really complex to address, whether it's about access to good food, whether it's physical activity, whether it's about what products are marketed to our children and young people. That then remains a priority, given the levels of excess weight that we see both in our children and our adult population. And then certainly for the other two priorities, we have, over many years, and I think what has changed in terms of mental health over the last ten years, that some of that stigma has been removed, that actually people are much more willing and able to talk about mental health, but obviously what we've seen is an increase in mental health issues. We have a refreshed mental health strategic partnership post-pandemic that had worked right the way through the pandemic too, but some real priorities in that in relation to children, young people, our work on suicide, developing work on dementia, and then our kind of crisis service areas. And then in relation to alcohol, what we're actually seeing is a slight change in terms of children, young people's drinking habits, which has been seen in some of the slight reduction in our hospital admissions, but certainly more to do in relation to those priorities identified there. And then in relation to the health, wealth, work, and economic development, that again over the years has seen some great work locally in terms of our Better Health at Work Award, the links between better health and better work are so intrinsically linked, so it's really important that we do this. And then more recently, some dedicated support for people in employment in relation to mental health and the development of the inclusive economic strategy, which is very much about supporting people into work or volunteering, but also ensuring that work places are healthy places to be, and that strategy is now being implemented. And finally, what you'll see in the report are a whole range of examples in there, because actually, and this example kind of highlights it in terms of the work that we've done together in relation to Group A Streptococcus, and working with our children's early years leads. Public health works with and through others, with tend to offer advice and guidance, with sometimes badger people to try and make change come about, but we can only do that by working with others. And I hope you see in the report quite a range of examples, whether that's our local CRE network, whether it's our Healthy Option Takeaway, whether it's our developing family hubs, or whether it's our drug and alcohol services, that the main thing that we do is try and work with our residents to make that change come about with and on behalf of them. So I guess in conclusion, members, I do feel that public health has embedded across the council with the opportunity to go further. We've seen some significant changes in the health and wellbeing of our residents, you know, and seeing that reduction in smoking does mean that we could reach five percent by twenty-thirty if we keep going the way that we are going and reducing that inequality, but we still have some of those real significant challenges, but with really good partnership working to seek to address those. And what I would hope looking ahead for the next ten years is that we continue with those improvements, drawing on our assets, and really seek to make those reduction in health inequalities which we still have. So, members, I hope that the recommendation is to receive the report today.
Thank you. Can I thank the director of public health for her annual report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Hood.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Chris Hood, portfolio holder for Adelton Health Services. I'm pleased to welcome the independent annual report from Amanda Healy, Director of Public Health, and would wish to thank her and her team for its production. This year's report, Ten Years in Local Authority, Looking Back to Plan Ahead, includes an in-depth focus on ten years of public health in the local authority. The Health and Social Care Act twenty-twelve was a major reform of the healthcare system and public health policy in England. It moved the public health function and services, including the Director of Public Health Statute Responsibilities, from the NHS to local councils in April twenty-thirteen, giving them responsibility to improve and protect the health of their residents. Moving into the local authority provided the environment for public health to advocate, influence, and work with others, responsible for issues including housing, education, and the economy, which all have an impact on people's health. In addition, working with elected members ensured that public health was focused more on working with communities. As always, the DPH annual report provides an update on the current health and wellbeing of our residents and highlights some in-depth work to understand the needs of our veterans across County Durham. It also recognises some of the challenges faced over the last ten years, such as the response and recovery from the Covid-nineteen pandemic, and the costs of living crisis, and how this has impacted locally. The Health and Wellbeing Board has overseen a wide range of work over the last ten years, including the integration of health and social care. The report provides an update on the Health and Wellbeing Board and the work undertaken against the four current key health priorities for County Durham: making smoking history, enabling healthy weight for all, improving mental health resilience and wellbeing, and reducing alcohol harms. The report highlights that smoking prevalence has decreased by six-point-seven percent, that's a reduction of twenty-six-thousand-seven-hundred smokers since twenty-thirteen. However, at fourteen-point-five percent, our levels remain above the national average, and we need to concentrate our efforts in County Durham to have a smoke-free future for our families. It also highlights the strong links with the social determinants of health, with joint work between health and economy, for an example. The report also highlights that we still have significant areas of challenge in relation to the health and wellbeing of our residents, including mental health. The Health and Wellbeing Board has mental health across the life course as a priority. The report highlights key programmes of work, including school-based mental health support, suicide prevention, and campaigns including Now You're Talking. Working with partners, we aim to improve mental health and tackle stigma and discrimination. I'm pleased to see this report published and the advice provided within it, which shapes our work looking ahead. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor. Does any other member wish to speak? councillor Jonathan Elmer.
Thanks for the report, Jane. And it really is a very positive report, but I just wanted to pick up on one aspect of it. You're talking about the health benefits that stem from access to open space, which I absolutely agree with. It's a really valuable opportunity to get people out walking, exercising and just getting healthier through doing that. But I'm personally involved in two projects. One of them is of significant scale across the county that are all about access to open space and providing walking opportunities for people and opportunities to enjoy nature. And both of these two projects are under threat in reality because of the council's, the time it takes, its inability to process requests that relate to people making use of land that's in its ownership. So I do think there's a concern there. I don't want to go into too many details, but there is a concern there, and I just wanted to register that concern.
Thank you, councillor Elmer. Obviously, what we'd be seeking to do is have as many people being as active as possible. And as we start to implement the physical activity strategy action plan, it would be good to have that further conversation with yourself about those two projects and pick that up outside of today, if that's okay.
Thank you.
councillor Christine Fletcher.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. As ever, I really enjoyed your annual report again. I just wanted to ask, I know, I think it is so important that the public health work alongside and collaborate with all the partners and that having a holistic approach to health is absolutely essential. I just wanted to ask about the way in which the public health department works with the housing associations. In my casework, I'm finding that so much of the health of my residents is linked to their housing conditions, damp and mould and cold, and houses really which, to be honest, need replacing now. But also, I see lots of mental health problems and antisocial behaviour activities, both of them as perpetrators and as victims. And I just wondered if you could just mention anything that you're doing with them. The other point is the area action partnerships, the OPSCIF funding that came out of the social isolation report, I feel was so beneficial across the county, not only that it raised the issue of social isolation and got people talking about being lonely. And I just wondered what the plans are as the public health team working alongside the AAPs in terms of targeting or making sure that we're addressing priorities. And then I wanted to thank you for the continued support to the Help to Health Volunteer Driver Scheme, which I refer so many of my residents to and which helps them to get travel to appointments outside of the county as well as within County Durham. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fletcher. And certainly in terms of housing, we work very closely with our housing colleagues. Obviously, at the moment, the council itself is consulting on its housing strategy and its homelessness strategy. And I think that gives us an even greater opportunity. I know some of the changes have already embedded health and wellbeing more explicitly in those priorities. We work very closely with one of our colleagues and they also report regularly into the Health and Wellbeing Board. We try and engage with our housing colleagues, certainly through some of our key talk groups such as our drug and alcohol services, to support people into good housing and from a mental health perspective as well. I think knowing, obviously, we've seen a real issue in terms of children and people and damp and housing, and I think that will be a key part in the refreshed housing strategy, which is to see public health or working with other colleagues across the council to ensure that those elements are definitely in there. And certainly, we also have our housing partners around the table, things like our Tobacco Alliance, when we think about smoke-free homes as well. So I hope that gives a flavour of some of the work, but definitely, I think the strategy will give us the opportunity to do more. I think in terms of the AAPs and how we've tried to work, as we have a member of the public health team almost allocated across the AAPs to work, so that where there's been funding, it's looking at how those activities are sustained beyond maybe the lifetime of the original funding. And thank you in relation to the Help to Help Volunteer Driver Scheme.
councillor Lucy Howells.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Amanda, for the report once again. It is a statutory responsibility, but we should never underestimate the impact that the public health place in influencing policy right across the council services, all services. You know, there's lots of good examples, we all know, in terms of the work that's been undertaken over the last 10 years. Vast amount, sometimes we undersell ourselves. There was a couple of things for me. Obviously, the priorities in smoking is still on the top there, and it's been your number one priority since you came to this council when we had those changes. And public health had a hard time. They've been in and out of local government, as long as I've been involved in local government, and I've seen many, many changes. One thing that hadn't been mentioned was the leisure facilities across the patch and how that plays a part in getting people healthy and fit and also combats the social isolation and also around sustainability for some of the projects that's been started up within the communities and then being lost along the way. So they're the points, and obviously, we know why, because of lack of funding and other decisions that may have been made. So really, I just wanted to make that point, but also place on record the work that the public health team and yourself as leader plays within this local authority. I know, and I'm sure others know, the vast amount of work that's been undertaken and the difficult times you've had, not only through Covid, but with financial cuts at different periods of time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howells. And certainly in terms of the leisure facilities, public health are working really closely with our colleagues within culture, sport and tourism. And we've been undertaking health impact assessments to ensure that the real benefits of those facilities are maximised and any negative impacts of them are minimised, and that's been taken forward. And I think the issue around sustainability of projects is a really important one, and we've been doing a lot of work with, particularly with Durham University, previously with T-Side, on evaluation and ensuring that as new projects are underway, that we can really look at how we measure them, which again increases the likelihood. So if they're really of benefit, then, you know, that does hold those projects in greater stead for future funding. So I think we're really trying to build in that evaluation and research into the work that we do, not just within public health, but across the council. Thank you, councillor Howells.
councillor Bell.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And also, I would like to echo the great work from Amanda's team in particular herself, we were so fortunate to have you on board with the council. One thing we didn't touch on, and it was the smoking, it's brilliant to see them numbers coming down, but recently, in the shop I was in and asked the sales on cigarettes, and the majority of the sales these days is on vapes. So I wondered, there was no mention of the vapes, if we, you know, if we badged it up as nicotine dependency, whether if you put smoking and vapes together, is it actually coming down because more and more, particularly younger people, you see using vapes? And I don't feel there's enough information out there to sort of say how bad they are regarding the nicotine content and also the illegal ones which are out there. It's just a few thoughts on that one. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, councillor Bell. And then obviously, there's a motion coming shortly in relation to the consultation that the government have put out in relation to, it's called Stopping the Start, which looks at increasing the age of sale, but also looks to potentially tighten the legislation in relation to vaping. I think in relation to smoking versus vaping, we know from evidence that vaping is much safer, not totally risk-free than smoking, but much less harmful. So for people who do smoke, that ability to switch to vaping and to have access to vaping is really important. And that is important to support people on that journey to stopping smoking altogether. We've also seen a real reduction in our children and people's smoking rates. What we have seen is an increase in children and young people vaping. What we don't know is whether that's an experimental. We're not seeing that as a gateway into smoking as yet, because we haven't seen that increase in smoking rates. However, I think in the consultation, some of those questions are about increasing the restrictions on vaping, having changes in some of the packaging, where they're displayed, the cost of them. And I think they're the kinds of things that could make a difference to ensure that they're still accessible for smokers, but that we do not want our young people to start vaping or smoking. I hope that helps, councillor Bell.
councillor McKeon.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I was struck by the comments on the obesity strategy, and in particular, the fact that it's not necessarily working as we would like it to. I feel that so often, the debate around obesity comes down to access to food and then those other sort of lifestyle factors. But actually, we know that for a lot of people who've experienced trauma, they use sugar and they use food to regulate their emotions because they don't have a healthy way of regulating difficult emotions because of that trauma. And a lot of that trauma can come from early childhood and be something that wasn't necessarily picked up, something that might seem low-level but won't come up in any other of the data that we collect. And I was just wondering how we could get a more mental health-focused element of the obesity strategy, because if it's not working, it just seems that mental health is like the dark matter in this discussion that we just don't bring up enough.
Thank you, councillor McKeon. And I think in terms of healthy weight, I think what we've refreshed, our strategy saw recently through the Health and Wellbeing Board, the previous plan has been updated. And I think it does then have those really clear links, you're absolutely correct in terms of links, between mental health, food choices and food choices aren't always easy choices to people. But I think in relation to healthy weight, it is multifaceted. So I'm more happy to share the more detailed plan and almost ensure that those mental health elements are covered to the extent that we think they should be in that plan. And that's also across the life course, as well as some of the wider policy things that we either have in place or need to have in place to ensure that the environment is a healthier environment rather than one which is much more kind of obsidogenic. So thank you, councillor McKeon. Happy to share that outside of this meeting.
councillor Alwyn Gunn.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you very much for the report, a good report as always. I just want to focus, Amanda, on the good partnership working. I'm very conscious of the fact that we depend incredibly, a large amount, upon our community organisations, our volunteers within, and particularly in the areas that we represent, where there are small villages and small towns. And I know that you mentioned about working together, communities working together alongside us as a council, to actually strengthen what we already have there and develop new ones. I'm rather concerned about sustainability of some of the smaller voluntary groups that we have and those that are really crucially important to our residents, to children and to their families, in supporting them through great difficulties, food poverty, fuel poverty, and all of those issues which affect hugely the health of those communities. And I'm concerned about that because I do see a squeeze on funding for those organisations. And I do see a squeeze on the sustainability of the volunteers themselves in relation to carrying out this work on a daily basis and sometimes doing it for seven days a week. So I'd really like to also give a big shout out for those community groups. They are hugely important to our areas, and I know that you recognise that. But I would like it stressed that without those community groups and those volunteers, there would be less opportunities within the communities we represent to actually help and support those families that are in the greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gunn. And absolutely, in terms of both, I think, some of the smaller voluntary sector organisations and people who do volunteer, because that giving in, people do get a lot back. And certainly, I think the work that we've been doing with Durham Community Action as the kind of infrastructure organisation, bringing them into some of our work around research and evaluation, ensuring that they can use the right information when they're bidding for funding, et cetera. I think it's just been one way over the last year that we've been kind of acknowledging and working with the voluntary sector from a kind of, you know, a system point of view to ensure that the funding does go to the right place. And obviously, Durham Community Action recognises there's some huge voluntary sector organisations, but also the small ones and the sustainability of those. So I think that's just one example, and they are now a key partner around the Health and Wellbeing Board table as well. But it's got to be the large and down to the very small. And we're also looking at ways of trying to measure that as well, because I think, again, that adds value to what those organisations and individuals can bring and what difference that can make to people's health and wellbeing. So we're trying to look at that again with Durham University, but certainly acknowledge that and recognise some of the pressures that those organisations are under. Thank you, councillor Gunn.
councillor Alison Beatty.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alison Beatty, Pelton Division, and also Shadow Portfolio Lead for Leisure. Amanda, thank you for a really, really informative presentation. Thank you to you and your team. Thanks. Several other people have now touched on the point I was actually going to raise, which is around looking forward with interest and hope to see the links to our leisure transformation programme and ensuring leisure facilities are equal across the actual county, ensuring no one is disadvantaged by where they live. Also, it is around the links to healthy food and access to healthy food in areas of disadvantage. And I was just wondering, obviously not for now, but I do think this is something that is vital, but is a plea that we do add here to our own transformation programme for leisure. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just pick that up, Chair. There's a report coming to Cabinet in the new year on the Leisure Transformation Programme.
Thank you, councillor Beatty. And certainly in terms of, absolutely in relation to all of those other factors, a really key part of our work around both physical activity and links back into the Health and Wellbeing Board and access to healthy food right from production to plate is something in sustainability that has really come to the fore, as well as the physical activity side. And thank you for your comments, councillor Beatty.
councillor Alex Watson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm talking about, obviously, the wellbeing, open space, mental health, all important to the public as such. My concern is parks in particular. And I'm referring to a park in Conset, the Conset Black Hill Park as such, where we have a toilet facility. I'm assuming toilets are very important to people who use parks for leisure and recreation purposes. It just, my concern is that this particular area, this lodge which houses the public toilet, is coming under threat and could close. I'm just wondering, which category do you place public toilets in parks where they're accessible in your category?
Thank you, councillor Watson. I think for me, this is probably one we'd need to discuss in more detail with the meeting today. Obviously, access to, obviously, the open spaces, we've talked about recreation and to facilities to support that is part of those assets. But the specifics, we probably need to look at outside today's meeting, but we'll take that as a note to take away, councillor Watson. Thank you.
councillor Veronica Andrews.
Thank you.
It remains more an acknowledgement of the very comprehensive and detailed report. Oh, sorry. It's more of an acknowledgement of the comprehensive and detailed report that you've submitted. Thank you very much. And also a recognition that positive changes have been made despite the very challenging and difficult times that people are going through at this moment in time. And I think the next challenge is trying to maintain that and build on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor David Hall.
Yes, I just wanted to ask a quick question about Alzheimer's dementia. You briefly mentioned it. In my division, Sherbyn Division, it does seem to be, as it is probably in many other areas, a kind of hidden problem despite the scale of it, despite its impact on death rates, its economic impact, its impact on the people suffering it and the carers for it, and the isolation that it seems to provoke as well. And whenever I've been involved in the relatively tip of the iceberg cases that I've come across, it always seems to be there's no joined up approach. And that's not a criticism of the teams involved, they're fantastic, they did an excellent job. But I do think, I wonder if you could say anything more about the future strategy? How it can be joined up across the council services from welfare benefits, the caring support, to the GP surgeries, to the CCG, across all these different services that these families and people come across? It never seems quite joined up enough and never seems to get the attention that it perhaps deserves. But that's just my experience, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hall. And I don't think anyone in this room would disagree that Alzheimer's and dementia is a really important issue, whether if it affects people on an individual level within their families or across our whole population. In the report, when I mention that mental health is one of our priorities under our mental health strategic partnership, dementia is one of those key areas. And currently, and again, our colleagues or some of our clinical teams, our commissioning colleagues are doing a piece of work to really try and understand the needs as well as the assets within our local communities. And that will lead to a kind of refresh of what that strategic approach will and should be looking forward. And I know that we're trying to do really dedicated work around things like dementia friendly. But I think, as you say, looking at where the join up of those either services or voluntary sector support is, is really important. But that needs assessment will help us to really understand so that we can use that to refresh our strategy. So hopefully that might be one that comes back and certainly before the next year to report through council.
Councillor Fraser Tinsley.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think the message for me is that there's a lot of work done, but there's a lot more work to do. What it brings home to me is that there's this horrendous statistic that if you're a man in one of the most affluent parts of County Durham, you can expect to live just under 10 years longer than a man in one of the most deprived areas in County Durham. And the situation isn't much better for women. When you look at absolute life expectancy as well, I think we're about two years behind UK average. And when it's healthy life expectancy, which is in many ways what matters, it's four to five years, I think, in a lot of instances. So I suppose my question is to you is, do you agree that the situation we face with regard to life expectancy is in many ways, it's not improving at the rate that it should be? And it could be argued that particularly over the last 10 to 13 years, the situation is getting worse. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Tinsley. I think certainly in terms of life expectancy and healthy life expectancy, what we've seen over the last, probably up until the pandemic, is that life expectancy has increased and healthy life expectancy has also increased. I think what we've witnessed through, obviously, the pandemic is some of the stalling of that and the impact of that. And also that inequality within, which is what you have raised in terms of healthy life expectancy, which I think is why in terms of some of the priorities, the focus on those who probably need the support most is a key part of the implementation plan. So, for example, in relation to smoking, our routinely manual population smoke at a greater level, so more targeted work towards that population or people with severe mental illness, dedicated work in relation to that. So I think that's how we are aiming to tackle that in terms of both life expectancy and healthy life expectancy. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no one else registered to speak. Can I ask the council to receive the report? We move on to item 10, request for dispensation under section 8.1, 85, paragraph 1 of the Local Government Act 1972. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. Under section 85 of the Local Government Act 1972, where a member fails to attend any meeting of the authority throughout a period of six consecutive months, then they cease to be a member of the council unless the authority approves the absence prior to the expiry of the six month period. Councillor Jean Chaplow has been unable to attend any meetings of the authority since the 19th of July 2023, and the expiry of the six month period would be the 18th of January. The report therefore seeks approval for a dispensation for councillor Chaplow in relation to the six month rule. I, as monitoring officer, am aware of the reasons for councillor Chaplow's absence, which relate to her ill health, and in the circumstances, I consider it reasonable for council to agree the dispensation. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a mover of the report, councillor Denal?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to send Jean my well wishes and hope that she makes a full and speedy recovery. And in doing so, would like to move the request for dispensation.
Can I have a second for the report, councillor Adcock Foster?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Adcock Foster, I'd like a second of the report.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report or are there any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the dispensation? Thank you. We move to item number 11, motion on notice. We have one motion for consideration today, which is detailed on the agenda. I would like to bring in the head of Legal and Democratic Services to confirm the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. So the usual rules of debate apply. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak, seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion other than the mover, who has a three minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time. No further amendments may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on the amendment except for the mover of the original motion, who has a right of reply but may otherwise not speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. And if an amendment is moved, it will be circulated to all members via email as well as being shown on the screen. Fifteen minutes before the expiry of the time limit for consideration of motions, the Chair will advise that there is 15 minutes left. At that point, no further registrations to speak will be accepted. Those already registered will be invited to speak in the order that they registered until the expiry of the time limit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Cathy Hunt, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Cathy Hunt, Woodhouse, Closon, Henall. I move the motion as printed with the addition of the word legal at the end of the second paragraph, as seen on the screen. Smoking is still the biggest cause of cancer, driver of health inequalities and premature death in our area. I support any measures to help reduce smoking rates and the death tobacco causes. Reducing smoking rates further will have a huge impact on reducing the demand on the NHS and the social care, but also the economic growth and prosperity. Most smokers start before the age of 18 and end up regretting ever getting hooked. I would like this to stop. Most of all, they don't want any of their children or grandchildren to get hooked on a product they know will kill two out of three long term users. Action is not only needed to create a smoke free generation, but it is also popular in the North East public. In 2023, only 6% of North East adults believe the government has gone far enough to stop smoking. In Durham County Council, the cost of smoking is £189.2 million each year. Our prevalence rates are reducing over time. However, we still have a way to go to reach the 5% by 2030, and we are committed to doing all we can to achieve this. I warmly welcome the announcement from government on the 4th of October 2023 around a smoke free generation and the plans to stop the start of a new generation of children and young people getting hooked on such a lethal addiction. I also welcome the subsequent consultation, stopping the start, a plan to create a smoke free generation in which questions around the age of sale of tobacco, measures to reduce youth vaping and enhanced enforcement. It is already illegal to sell e-cigarettes and vaping products containing nicotine to under 18s or for an adult to buy them on behalf of someone under 18. However, national data for those aged 11 to 17 is showing an increase in the numbers who are currently vaping or that have experimented with vaping. Most national consultations seek to understand the public's views on which the restrictions might have an impact on reducing vaping, including restricting flavours, appeal for the affordability of vapes and regulating the point of sale. I would at this point like to say I'm not against vaping. I think vaping is an excellent tool to stop people or a gateway to stop people from smoking. I propose the motion for the following. To respond to the government consultation with our support for the age of sale proposal, to respond to the questions on vaping and ensuring that evidence based measures to tighten the promotion, packaging, branding, pricing of vapes to reduce the appeal to children and young people, whilst ensuring to continue to encourage smokers to try and quit, including the option of switching to totally vaping. Finally, youth council have been working with Fresh to produce a video. I'd like to thank Peter, Alfie and Charlotte for being here today to show their support for this motion. And I can't wait to see your video. And I've just received from Andy in Fresh, really inspiring a set of videos we filmed with youth council on Thursday. So thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Before I ask for a second, council will note that councillor Hunt has moved her motion with the addition of the word legal at the end of paragraph two. So the motion as altered now refers to legal vaping. The alteration is displayed on the screen. Does council agree to the inclusion of the additional word? Thank you. Can I have a second for the motion, councillor Hood?
Thank you, Chair. I wish to second the motion, supporting the government's plans detailed in the stopping the start and, one, to respond to the government consultation with our support for the age of sale proposal, and, two, to respond to questions on vaping, ensuring evidence based measures to tighten the promotion, packaging, branding and pricing of vapes to reduce the appeal to children and young people, whilst ensuring we continue to encourage smokers to try to quit, including by an option of switching over totally to vaping. Smoking remains the largest single cause of preventable deaths and is one of the largest causes of health inequalities in England. The harm of smoking falls on everyone within our society. The cost of smoking isn't just on the individual itself, but on the wider economy such as health and social care costs, fabricated callouts and loss to the economy due to people being unwell and unable to work. Smoking kills up to two in three long term users when used as intended. Raising the age of sale in 2007 was successful in terms of reducing youth smoking, and we hope for similar results in raising the age of sale in line with the current government's plans. I'm delighted that some members of the youth council are here, have been key supporters, and the government announcement in October 23 detailed their plans to stop the start of children and young people becoming addicted to tobacco, including publishing a consultation to gather views on the suggested plans, which I welcome and support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hovells.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for bringing the motion forward. I think it's been a political all party working group who's been set up in government, who's brought this to the forelight. And we all know how cigarettes light and create problems within our community and within society and puts a strain on our National Health Service. The new legislation which is proposed and the plans is a big major step forward to reducing harm from tobacco and illegal vapes. All political parties support bringing this change. We all know that local authorities are best at the forefront of reducing smoking and enforcement by trading standards in tackling illegal sales of tobacco and illegal vapes. The new proposed legislation is to create a smoke free generation by introducing of the new laws to stop young people turning 14 or younger this year legally being sold tobacco products. Raising the smoking age by a year each year until it applies to the whole population. What an achievement if we can achieve that. The plan puts forward to reduce youth vaping, ensuring that there is a right balance between protecting children and supporting adults to quit. Trading standards will target underage illicit sales of tobacco and vapes. The government's funding to local councils will enable this work to be carried out. Other new powers for councils are to spot fine on enforcement on the new legislation if agreed. Local plans are well underway to engage with our partners. This council and others can't do it in isolation, we must do it together. A feed into the consultation. This side of the council welcomes the consultation. We also welcome the £800k to public health, the extra finance for trading standards. I don't believe that we know exactly how much has come into trading standards as yet, but I did read something last night which said £300k, which will help carry out the responsibilities and duties that will be placed upon us. Because we can't do the enforcement and we can't do the work with public health unless we've got the finance to do it. Chairman, this morning, I would support the motion, but I would also make the request that any new funding, like the £800k and the £300k, is ring fenced to deservise public health and trading standards so we can fulfil our work requirements, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hovells.
Absolutely smart, the motion.
Yeah, if I can just come in on the funding, we are still awaiting details of the exact funding amount for this, but we will include something in the consultation about this being funded and not sort of allocated from existing budgets. So we'll pick that up in the consultation, councillor Hovells.
There is no one else registered to speak, can we all agree? We move on to item 12, questions from members. We have received one question for today's meeting from councillor Kevin Shaw. Councillor Kevin Shaw, can I invite you to ask your question, please? The question will be displayed on the screen.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kevin Shaw, Shadow Cabinet Lead for Regeneration Investment and Member for Durham Division. Can the leader give the council an update on the Level 311 bids for County Durham and explain what the total costs were for Durham County Council in preparing bids for rounds one, two and three?
Can I ask the leader of the council to respond, please?
Can I first thank councillor Shaw for his question? As I'm sure councillor Shaw is aware, given the press coverage, all five remaining bids were unsuccessful in round three. In total, the council has spent just under £1.2 million preparing the bids, which had we been successful, would have been approximately 1% of the funding received. Government disclosed that they had changed the rules regarding the awarding of funding for round two bids after bids were submitted. Just to remind you, this change ruled out any authority from being successful in round two if they had received a successful round one bid, regardless of their scale of need. As a result of this, we wrote to government requesting reimbursement of our costs. The response we received to this request was that we could resub- The response we received to this request was that we could resubmit bids in round three, on which further guidance would be provided. Following the announcement of successful round three bids a few weeks ago, once again after the event, we discovered that the criteria had been changed yet again without anyone's knowledge. This time, we understand that County Durham had been removed as a Priority One status area, therefore reducing the likelihood of any success. I can confirm that as a result of being made aware of this and there being no more bidding rounds, a further letter has now been sent to government requesting full reimbursement of the council's costs, which I am more than happy to share a copy of that letter with members.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Given your disappointment, which I think everybody in the chamber will share, will the leader of the council agree with the Labour group that this council should take every possible step, including if necessary, explore legal options to get our community's money back from what has been a failed Tory beauty project?
Thank you for the subsequent question. I can confirm that we have sent the letter. I can also confirm that when the announcement was made, councillor Bell and I were both at the County Council Conference down in Buckinghamshire, where the Right Honourable Secretary of State was present, and he was told in no uncertain terms by both of us personally what we thought of the call procedure and how disappointed we were, and we will be termed in it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. That concludes today's business for the council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have watched the meeting.